All right, we're gonna get started. This is a normal, regular schedule of board meeting for Edgewood City Schools. Mrs. Bowers, would you call it rule please?
Mr. Gabbard.
Present.
Mrs. Ashcraft, present. Mr. Messerschmidt?
Here.
Mr. Pressler?
Here.
Mr. York?
Here.
Would you please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have anyone here.
We don't have anybody here for prayer tonight.
I wonder if we switched the reading.
At this time, I'm gonna look for a motion for the approval of the agenda as amended, which would be moving the presentations, A and B, just switching.
Okay.
Mrs. Ashcraft, you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt, Mrs. Bowers, would you call it rule please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion goes five zero.
With that being done, Mrs. Nix, would you like to get us started, please?
Okay, good evening. Uh, thanks for putting us on your agenda tonight. I'm Nancy Nix. I'm the auditor of Butler County since February of this year, and it's my pleasure to be here, and thank you for your service, um, to our county. Um, I'm just going to skip a few minutes about the auditor's office and in general, and then we'll talk about the valuation and the breaches and everything that you've been seeing in the newspaper for the last several months. I wanna introduce Michael Stein, who's our real estate director in the auditor's office. So he deals a lot with people on the ground. Patty, I'm sure you have, um, worked with Mike Stein over the years. Uh, but first, um, the auditor's office is, it touches everybody in some way, shape, or form. Uh, we are the chief financial officer for Butler County. We do all the county's payroll and write all the checks, pay the expenses, make sure every expense is proper for public purpose. Uh, we are the weights and measures department. So, for instance, if you buy a piece of, uh, pound of meat at the store, you wanna make sure that that scale is correct. And we check over seven thousand devices every year, including gas pumps, to make sure that they are being scaled and weighed properly for our consumers. Uh, we do vendor licensing for the state of Ohio, so that when you, um, open up a business, uh, the state knows your business and can collect sales tax. Uh, we do all the assessments, um, for Butler County property, and that gives the far most attention in the county, uh, because of the resulting tax bills. Uh, we do dog licensing, so if you have an animal, you deal with our office to get your dog license. And then we calculate the taxes, and that's Mike Stein's, um, big job, and it's very, very complex. Um, I was the county treasurer for sixteen years before becoming the auditor, and it is my sincere honor to serve you in this role. Um, so now I will just change it over to the valuations and just give you a little history of where we've been. Um, I took office in February, but this, uh, this, I don't wanna call it fight, uh, dispute with the state tax commissioner has been going on a lot longer than that. Um, as you know, counties are, uh, reap- reappraised every six years, and then in the third year is a triennial update. So if you go back to 2020, the tax commissioner, uh, ordered the former county auditor to raise property values twenty percent countywide. And the county auditor balked and said, "We have our own in-house appraisers," which we do, and they said it's coming in countywide sixteen, fourteen to sixteen percent, not twenty percent. But we found out, uh, he did dispute that in the Board of Tax Appeals and lost that case eventually, though it took a couple of years for that to all unwind. So we ended up having, um, a dictated twenty percent increase in our countywide values for residential properties in 2020. Um, but because it took so long for that case to get through the Board of Tax Appeals, we had billed at the lower amounts. So I, I was the treasurer at the time, so I was doing that billing. So when we lost, I had to, just this year, I was still treasurer, send out bills with retroactive tax increases to forty percent of the county. Uh, Edgewood or Trenton wasn't involved in that. It was Hamilton, Westchester, Fairfield, and Fairfield Township. So they took the brunt of that for the county, because they were the big enough areas to move the needle to give us the twenty percent. So fast forward, we're here this year, and you know inflation is just raging as if you go to the grocery or you get gas. Uh, I blame it on federal, uh, policies, um, fixated from high. Uh, that has caused all this massive inflation with the interest rates, energy policy, and flooding our economy with trillions of dollars of debt spending. So we're dealing with that now. When I took office in February, I think Mike told me the very next month, we were looking at, um, I think at that time, we were thinking twenty-five percent, uh, you know, across the county for residential property value increases. And knowing that the twenty percent three years ago caused such heartburn, I thought, "Oh, my, this is not gonna be good." So, um, our county commissioners jumped into action and brought our lawmakers in. We had two summits, uh, May first and June first with our lawmakers to try to dispute the way, the method that our tax commissioner was valuing our properties. We are saying, "Look at all three years of values, all the sales that are happening. What they're doing is taking all the sales for these neighborhoods, and we look at them over a period of time, but the state tax commissioner is looking at only one year. Or if you're looking from twenty-two, or 2020 through 2022 sales, obviously, the inflation has skyrocketed, especially in that third year. And we don't always agree with them, the sales they're, they are using. We have our data, they have their data, and they don't reconcile. So it's not just the, the timing, it's the methodology. Plus, we never have the final say. They have the final say. And so we had this, um, summit, these two summits, May first, June first, with our lawmakers, trying to get them to make the tax commissioner see we should look at it, because it, it, it makes it more, um, not fight as much. It, it makes it more even, smooth, uh, instead of going these highs and lows. Uh, but they refuse, these are unelected bureaucrats in Columbus. They're not, they are not elected, like we are elected, and they're telling us what our values are. And our appraisers are certified appraisers, and they are not. So there's just been an ongoing, I don't wanna, wanna call it a feud, but we aren't agreeing. And so our lawmakers have been going to bat for us. Uh, they tried to put it into the budget so that, um, as of June thirtieth, to, to make the tax commissioner look at the three-year average, but it was pulled. Uh, we thought it was over, but I guess that, as you're saying, it's rearing its head again. It may still pass. Um, we won't know that until, I don't know, October, November. But it's, a tax calculation is, it's a very long process, so then, uh, that maybe puts our, our tax bills, uh, on delay. I'm not sure, uh, what's going to happen with that. But we are working very hard to try to, um, be aggressive in letting taxpayers know what's going on. We are trying to fight it. Um, the, the problem is the, the federal policies that have come down are affecting all of us, as we know. And so we are at the whim, um, of our state tax commissioner, and all of these are laws, um, the Ohio Wise Code that our lawmakers put in. But it's rate, when you look at property tax bills, that's what gets everybody upset, it's rate times value. So we're looking at the values, and the values are what they are. I mean, we can dispute methodology, we can dispute valid sales, but they're gonna be sort of close. Even the, the tax commissioner eventually accepted our values at thirty-seven percent countywide. Um, if we were doing it in-house, we would probably be more in the twenty-five to thirty percent. So there's still, uh, inflation in our residential, uh, markets, we know that. But it's also the rates. The rates do, are derived from the levies that voters pass. And there are some, uh, school districts that have really large levies. Uh, there are townships, cities, and I think over time, because of the local government funds that were cut, um, during the Kasich administration to plump their eight billion dollar hole fifteen years ago, we have had eighty new levies on the ballot in fifteen years. Parks, libraries, things that the state were more partners with us. We're now funding locally, and it's becoming extremely difficult for our elderly citizens and low-income citizens to afford their property tax bills. So while the state, I hate to blame, when I blame the state, I'm not blaming our lawmakers, because they are going to bat for us. Senator Lang, Representative Hall, and, and all the others, um, Creach, Representative Creach, they have been working hard for us. When I talk about the state, I'm talking about, uh, unelected bureaucrats, or I'm talking about state leadership that has not listened. But we have forty-one counties that are dealing with this somewhat. They're starting to finally listen, even though we've been yelling about it since the spring, um, and something may happen, but, uh, at the, I hate to end the day that term, but, um, we are still dealing with a very heavy property tax burden. The state is continuing to decrease or lower income tax rates, and sales tax rates were the lowest in Butler County. But our property tax burden, I think George said we're the eleventh worst, Senator Landset said we're the eleventh worst in the state for our property tax burden. So we've got to somehow find a way to, um, to lessen this impact on our, our taxpayers. And I will also mention, lastly, um, you probably read about our request. Uh, Mike Stein would have sent Patty a, um, email on August thirty-first about, um, rolling back some of the millage. All townships, cities, school districts, and our county, they have, you have the ability to roll back millage. Um, school districts, I know, are, are, they say that they would lose more in state funding if they were to roll back millage. Also, I know Edgewood has had serious problems, uh, passing any levies. Uh, we're not strong-arming anyone. Also, if the, uh, state lawmakers do come through with this three-year average of the eleventh dollar, this will be pulled from the table, it would no longer be a, a discussion piece. But we were just simply saying, if everyone got on board and reduced some of their own millage, then it would, um, be less of an impact. The taxpayers would have less of an impact on our taxpayers. Um, but I don't know if, we, we don't, New Miami is going to, uh, participate, Fairfield Township, uh, maybe Liberty Township. We've not heard of any school district who's going to participate in that program. We met with the school treasurers last week, they were, have a lot of questions. We had a meeting with many school districts, um, or city or township, and we met with county commissioners, um, about our request to roll back millage. I know Mike, um, as the tax calculator for, um, all school districts in the auditor's office, he is able to lower some of the millage on the bonds and the permanent improvements, and he will be working with Patty, uh, through that process. But I don't know that you have a, a whole lot more, uh, to give back, um, in Edgewood. So no strong-arming from us, it's really, we want, because we are a repository of information in the auditor's office, we just need taxpayers, school districts, cities, and county and townships to know that they can lessen the impact. It is doable, uh, it is a discussion piece amongst you, and, um, perhaps if the lawmakers come through with the eleventh dollar, none of this will be necessary. But the, the tax bills regardless will still be a little bit painful this go around. So that's really my remarks, and we're here for questions. If you have questions about tax calculations, I brought the guru. Uh, I think school district funding can be a little more complex. I'm a little more comfortable in front of the cities and the townships of the county than the school districts, so I brought my partner here. So, anyway, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
So, I, I have some questions.
Yeah.
Um, when you say roll back millage?
Yeah.
You're asking us to forego our, what fund would that come from?
Part of the windfall. Um, it would be one of your levies, you would reduce, reduce the rates so that you collect the same amount as you did last year. It's just foregoing the windfall that would be going into, I assume, a general fund, you went in?
The windfall being from, from the increase of taxes?
Do what?
The windfall being from the increase of taxes?
From the inflationary piece, yes.
Then we need to pass, we have to pass a levy now in order to do that. So we're not talking about inside millage, right? We're talking?
It's inside millage.
So we are talking inside millage?
Yes, just inside millage.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't know how closely you followed it, but we, we cut about two million dollars out of our budget, and we, we had to make some drastic cuts here. We actually cut about nine percent of our operating budget for us to give up the inside millage. I mean, we're, we're talking now about shutting buildings down and eliminating busing, and, and, I mean, it would dramatically, it would, it would destroy our, our ability to operate the way that we are, so I mean, that's, I don't think that's an option.
Right, we did discuss.
But it would be very difficult for us.
Edgewood, um, when I met with county commissioners, Edgewood was brought up. It was one of our pain areas that we knew it would probably not be possible.
So, so when you say if we roll that money back, I'm ju- I'm just trying to understand this, because who would benefit from that?
Well, the, the taxpayers would benefit. They would have, their tax bill would be less than otherwise.
So we'd basically be giving a reprieve to the taxpayers to basically compensate for their increased property value by giving less money to the district? We're, we would all set the property tax increase by giving money back?
When would that end?
Oh, this would be just one year. This was one year to give our lawmakers time to find a fix. Um, like I said, I don't know if any school district doing it, and that's no skin off our nose. Really, we are just saying, this is an option that taxpayers need to know about. But if you're a, a school board and you're saying, "We would lose," on the other hand, this Madison, Middletown, Monroe, uh, we met with them Friday afternoon. They said they would lose more in state funding than they would gain, and so it wouldn't be possible. So, um, yeah.
So I, I got a question, Nancy.
Yes.
I, I've seen articles, I've seen things that talked about the state's budget being one of the largest in the country, um, like top five. It, it, I'm assuming that's true and accurate, right?
Well, I don't know about that, but I do know that they are sitting on a pile of money.
So is, is this, is this the state legislators coming to the property owners and asking us to increase our property taxes to pay for these massive state spending budgets? Is that what this is?
Um, well, they're, they're cutting their income tax rate, so they are giving a benefit there. And really, when we talk about our local property taxes, this is all local money. This doesn't go to the state. I know as a school district, the levers, uh, go back and forth with your state funding and your local funding, but overall, everything on your tax bill stays local. The laws haven't changed, everything's still the same. The only thing that has changed is we have massive inflation. And so that's why the lawmakers are getting involved. Otherwise, they would have nothing to do with property taxes.
And state funding's not increasing at the same rate it is?
Well, I think if you have, Thomas, has Thomas Hall come here, Steve, or Robbie Creach? Have they come?
No, I don't know.
Because they are saying they've put a lot more for public education in this last budget. So I don't know the state budget or your budget, you know, stick to the county and our property taxes. Um, but yes, I think their coffers are full. Um, they've just kind of quit being our partner in, in local services over the last fifteen years, and that's why we've had so many levies. Um, and it's, I think it's out of whack. It's out of whack with our income tax, our sales tax, our property tax. The property tax piece has just become a two-birds sum.
Welcome to the group that, that has, uh, part of the alienated group from the state treasury, because we've been there for a long time. Uh, school, school staff, um, what's, what's the total amount that would be, um, would be the benef, what would be the benefit of that in Butler County?
You mean the, the request?
In dollars, yeah.
Well, I think, I, Mike could put it all together. He's had a spreadsheet for every single district, and it ended up like forty million dollars. But, you know, ten of that is Lakota. And I don't look for Lakota to be on board, so down here, I'm already down to thirty. Now, one of the commissioners acted like they would probably, they have any budget for this windfall. So they could realistically roll back the millage, not accept the windfall, and that would be five point eight million dollars. That could be thirty dollars per household. So when you, like, when I talk to Middletown, um, they're supposed to be five hundred forty-five thousand dollars, and they're saying, "That's five police officers." No, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go with your request. But that's not been an official termination. Uh, it's just up for each school board. It, it's not a huge impact, I don't think, unless everyone would do it. Uh, before the million in the county would be a lot. Um, I think the hope right now is they're going to come through, because it's changing every day. We thought it was dead, this three-year averaging thing, we thought it was dead. Now all of a sudden, it's resurfacing. So it, you know, rolling back millage may be a moot point, anyway. Um, so we're, we're, we'll see, and then we'll see when we can get the tax bills out, so.
Is anybody else being asked, or just the school districts?
I don't know, cities, townships, and the county.
Cause there's ten mills in the county, what, what is the inside millage?
One point nine, two mills.
Ten mills or something?
Well, there's, there's.
We don't have ten mills, I know those are split between schools, townships, and so forth.
Right, ten mills is shared.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So, are all the counties in Ohio making this effort to get schools?
Well, we have twenty-eight counties that are in revaluation, thirteen counties that are in the triennial date like Butler County. So forty-one out of eighty-eight counties are being reevaluated, but we've been on it, um, all year. They're just now sort of noticing, um, unfortunately.
You mentioned we're one of the worst in the state. Can you explain a little further what that means?
Uh, for what, which part?
You were talking about property tax burden was worse in this area than in Ohio.
Ohio's the worst, the top eleven were. Eleventh worst in the state for property tax burden in the country, Ohio.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think George said that in our meeting, right?
Nancy, I, I am a superintendent of the treasurer for a reason, so I'm almost hesitant to even ask this, but you know how rulers get started, and people are upset that you might have to give up money in here and there, but I was at a superintendent meeting last week, and it was mentioned that possibly Butler County's in this situation because of the framework we collected taxes in the past? That they brought that up in the treasurer's meeting the day before? That are, we've done something different in Butler County that kind of created this? That was alluded to. Mike, you were in that meeting too, I think. Do you know what I'm talking about with treasures last Thursday? Were you with Butler County?
What are you against because of it being billed at that lower rate back in twenty twenty?
Oh, the retroactive taxes, that situation?
See, I told you I know just enough to be dangerous.
Okay.
But that was alluded to, and I didn't know what that meant. I was just curious, you could explain?
Well, that's what I had talked about earlier, when I had to, as treasurer, I had to bill retroactive taxes to forty percent of the county, because we had to move up everybody's value, well, forty percent of the county, their values up to the twenty percent mandated by the state instead of the fourteen to sixteen percent that the auditor had billed.
Was that because we were doing something wrong, or that was just because?
No, that's the, the former auditor had been disputing the tax.
Just caught up with us.
Correct.
That's not the way it was explained, thank you for putting that part.
We lost in the Board of Tax.
I wanted to ask you, because I was like, I, I don't quite understand that.
Okay. It's, I mean, everything we do, you, you know, is, um, led guided by the state.
Same, we're an agent.
We're in the same boat, I agree. Yeah, okay. We're all agents of the state, and they take the rules. Yes.
Yes.
I have another question, Nancy. Um, so the, the timing on this was absolutely terrible for our tax level, because right as we were getting ready to go to the polls, all this came out that property taxes are going up forty-two percent, and I think you guys saw the headlines and stuff. Doesn't sound like it's gonna be that way, but, um, my, my question is, is if this goes through, in, in terms of, you know, and we ask Patty this question every time we're up here, we're, we're just basically meeting our five-year forecast, I mean, we're, we're making it year to year, just barely getting by, and if we have any major changes in our forecast or the, the money that's coming in, it's gonna be a big deal for us. So we, we need to kind of have an idea when we're gonna need to go potentially and ask for a levy. So we're all kind of crossing our fingers, because I heard the same thing that you just talked about tonight, that Thomas Hall said that a lot of this money's gonna be earmarked for school districts. When, when will we know that? When, when are we gonna have an idea of what our, our increase in revenue's gonna look like?
Well, that's in the state budget, wouldn't they know that now?
Um, they should know what they're going to be needing for next year.
Okay.
Um, I think what they're looking to is.
Do you want to put it here?
Sure. I think, I think some of the point is with Edgewood City Schools is when we made this request, we're not asking for a rollback of your operating funds. Um, Edgewood's at what they call the twenty-mill floor. So you're, you're tapped out as far as using any of that money to roll back any millage.
So we've got three mills inside millage, right?
Yes, correct. So you can't touch any of that money that's attributed to the twenty-mill floor, because you're already there. If you decide to roll one, that, one levy back, the other one would just go back up to compensate for that injury. So you can't touch your operating funds. So it's what Nancy was alluding to, is the PI, um, fund is the only one we looked at as far as Edgewood, and that was a very small millage. Um, in addition to that, like, looking at, so Patty and I will work towards the end of the year, and we'll look at your substitutes and bond rates. Basically, what we do with those is just take rate times value, and determine what you need in order to pay that debt.
I don't think we know that, do we, Patty? Do you know what the budget's gonna look, I mean, it's not.
We have been getting some, uh, numbers on our state, and I don't have a payment in October, what they kept telling us, "Wait till you get that first foundation payment in October, and you'll have a little bit better feel of your state aid." The one thing we have experienced, um, is it has taken the state so long to catch up. They are just now getting us to twenty-two grades when we're in twenty-four. So, um, having been deficit spending the last three historical years, when we filed that forecast in May, and then we were deficit spending again in May, we're trying to not deficit spend moving forward. Um, working with Frontline on this next forecast, I'll be back in Loveland, I'll work on that again next week. It looks like any kind of rollback would be net neutral. What I don't want to happen is to roll back anything and then our ask, because we're basically, I think we're gonna have to do that renewal next year then to go back on the ballot. I think we would be okay to not go back on the ballot in twenty-five or twenty-six, possibly. But come twenty-seven, if we roll back anything now, my concern is, is that the ask in twenty-seven is gonna have to absorb whatever we're giving up now. We're also experiencing inflation in the district, and that's been one of the hardest things with this forecast, because everything coming in, a lot of it's doubled in price what we paid last year. That's something that I can't forecast, so I, it, it's a challenge, it's a moving target.
So, so you don't physically have a dollar amount that we're gonna see increase?
I can, I have some rough numbers, um.
So, so I guess you just kind of see my point, right? I mean, we're, we're dealing with rough numbers, and when you're dealing with rough numbers, and you're, you're basically just barely making ends meet, that's kind of hard to, so I guess that was really what my question was about, is when can we expect all this to get hammered out and us know when, what we're gonna see and what we've got to work with?
My question. You're the principal. And then next week, what the next forecast will look like for November. Again, we'll keep dialing that in until November gets here, and we have to follow that with the state, but.
Well, I have two questions. When you say Ohio is the eleventh worst in this, in the country, what does worst mean? Like highest, or the way they figure them, what, what does worst mean?
Yeah, highest property tax burden.
Highest, okay. And then you said, on your little sheet here, it says unfortunately, an amendment was, um, forced, stripped out prior to getting the governor's desk, but you're saying that's back on the table?
House Bill one eighty-seven, that's Representative Hall's, um, bill that, to try to do the three-year average.
So what is like the drop dead date for that? When are we gonna break that?
I wish I knew. I mean, it should have been done in June. Um, it's really, it, I think it's more having to do with getting the rates back from the state, because that, you would have forty-one different counties sending up our, uh, value abstracts and trying to get approval back, when we got approval months ago, and then trying to turn around our bills. So I don't know that drop dead date, I, it, it was like months ago.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'm sure you've enjoyed going around and sharing this wonderful news with everyone.
I appreciate you.
Thanks for coming into a difficult situation, and I'm glad to hear it's up to each district to know.
Well, we're all on the side, you know?
Right, exactly. Just unfortunate, and, and as we tell everyone, contact your lawmakers.
You know, Thomas, uh, Thomas was in diapers when we started this whole mess with, uh, school funding in two thousand one, two, and, uh, he was a student way back when I worked at Madison, so I got to know him pretty well as a kid. Uh, good fella, his heart's in the right place. But it's, it's an advantage to look back at history, and as I've said many times, uh, the Supreme Court told us in two thousand, two thousand one that our system was unconstitutional.
I think it was nineteen ninety-seven.
Ninety-two.
No, nineteen, your Roth case was nineteen ninety-two.
It was supported, it was supported by the Supreme Court that, that far down the road, so. Um, and nothing has happened, and I know you, we've seen the headlines, and we've seen the newspaper articles about the state increasing school funding. Uh, when you look at, look at that and break it down, some of that, a lot of that, some of that's going to charter schools. Um, the other thing that happens, um, with that money that the state puts into the schools is that it goes into a formula, and those multipliers in that formula change. We don't know what that formula is. You don't know what that formula is. Nobody will tell us what that formula is. So they can put ten thousand dollars more into the formula, and the end result can be three thousand less than what was. So they can put ten thousand dollars more into the formula, and the end result can be three thousand less than what was the year before. So it's a, it's a game that's being played many times, and it's been going on for a long time. So I, you know, why not let go of some of the COVID money? It's still sitting in a pot somewhere in Columbus. There's probably a million, maybe, millions, maybe a billion or so. So if we get down to it, there's, there is money, but usually those people up there won't let go of it, so.
Just like we don't want to let go of the COVID.
Our rule, yeah.
Yeah. We all, we all territorial.
I think, I think you've answered a lot of questions as far as, as how that's all going to look at the end of the day. In three years, are you going to be back here doing this again?
Well, that's up to our lawmakers. They're supposedly fixing the problem. I had done the one-year request to give them time. They may come, this, this three-year average that we're talking about, that would sunset after three years. So they are trying to give themselves time to fix our school funding, to fix our property tax. Now, they can't decide on anything among themselves up there, so we shall see. It's that crystal ball you talked about. Any more questions?
I have one. This might be from Maya, and I know we talked on Thursday, and you have not heard anything about on the Rockies appeal. Any change since?
Well, we have not. I contacted the state, and they said as far as they know, there's been no settlement, nothing done on the Rockies, so you have two years of collections that's sitting out there in delinquency. The numbers, I think I shared with you on your total amount that's sitting out there.
And I, just so that I can share with everyone here, that delinquency as far as Edgewood is involved is two-point-three-five million dollars. I did hear from Frontline that the Nexus one settled, and they went seventy percent in favor of Nexus rather than.
Four hundred percent.
Yeah, so if that's the case, you know, we may not repeat that as well. So I just want everybody to, we've been hopeful and waiting on this, but knowing that it may not. Yeah. So, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you both for coming. Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Our motto is transparency, outreach, and honesty, so please just reach out to us anytime. We'll be here, we'll go out wherever invited. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, as we transition to our next presentation, last month, you heard several days were approved to allow for our preschool team to get together to really work on the licensure around the Step Up to Quality program. There's also been some big things going on. So I invited Pam, who's working with Mr. Banks with preschool compliance, to do a brief demonstration and to love on a few of our staff members, because they just went above the beyond this summer. So Dr. Thor, thank you, and welcome.
Sure, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Yes, if you'd like to, you can come down. There'll be some pictures at the end that you want to make sure you can see well. Okay, again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about this tonight. It has been some fun work for me. I don't know if you are aware, but my, in my previous life, I call that sometimes, I have a few years of experience in preschool. So it's kind of been returning home a little bit, and I have enjoyed what I've been doing. Again, I'm not in the trenches like the everyday teachers are in the classroom, but I've had some experience of going over and supporting and helping out with loving and loving kids and getting to be in classrooms. Actually, I'll share this real quick, and then we'll get to the points on here. Got called out by a three-year-old, because I was in a classroom, and she says, what exactly are you doing here? Now, we could play for a little while. I had to, like, making Doritos and pizzas out of Play-Doh and feeding me. And so the one says, exactly what are you doing here? And I said, well, I'm a helper to Mr. Banks. And she says, oh, like a principal? I said, yeah, kind of, a little bit. I'm kind of like a principal's helper. And she goes, you can't be in this room without a badge, because I'll be perfectly honest, and I don't have it on all the time at the board. So I had to, I got called out. I've got to wear it every time I go in the building now. It's around my neck. Also keeps me from leaving it behind. All right, so our preschool focus for this year, we've had some changes in regulations, et cetera, so we are going to focus on our school culture. That's partly because of results from surveys that Kelly had done toward the end of the year last year, the UCC. Skills for students, the new standards that we have, and making sure that we are providing quality preschool education to all our students. We're going to focus on professional development and collaboration, and then we're also going to focus on systems creation, trying to find ways that make everybody's life a little bit easier while we're maintaining what's required by the state for our students. So when you look at our Step Up to Quality, it goes hand in hand with our licensing, and we are going to have a full licensing visit this year, which I remember those days from when I was in preschool, and it always puts everybody on edge, because they will come, and they'll measure the depth of their mulch, and they'll look through several things. But the things that are going to pop out here in this is we are in what they call a new biennial, which means staff members every two years begin from scratch needing to achieve PD, professional development and licensing. So we are going to make sure that we can get started on that, get an early jump on it, and make sure that we are looking at the professional developments that they need and desire to be able to get that done so we can support our students. They do have to be Ohio-approved instructional hours to align with our Step Up to Quality, but they are still required to get other trainings, like their CPR, communal disease recognition. Those types of things are still required every so often for staff. So this is a great opportunity to have those days and make sure all this is taking place. On here, I already mentioned that the training resets through, they call it OPRO, the Ohio Childcare Resource and Referal Association, which is where we will have staff sign up for the majority of the trainings, and that is our care pros, as well as our lead teachers in the classrooms, Mr. Banks and myself. And then also, I have applied for instructor status, because in my past experience and my qualifications, I have a fairly high ranking with OPRO, so I'm hoping that they're going to allow me to provide very targeted professional development for what we need at the preschool. Our beginning steps on culture, we're evaluating communication venues. How are we communicating with staff? Is that a hack? What do we need to add? Providing feedback to the staff, honest feedback, and getting their feedback to us. We've tweaked a few things and trying to get just some honest feedback about where we are and whether or not that is enough support for what they need. Opportunities for collaboration among team members, we want to make sure, because this can be difficult for those therapists that are working with our classroom teachers to find time to actually be able to meet and talk about individual students, and to support the care pros that work with those students and make sure they have the support that they need. Leadership meetings, we've added additional leadership meetings, multi-role teams, which means we'll have, sometimes it's classroom teachers and Jeff, so then you've got Jeff, the leader of the building. You've got myself for preschool support, and then you have Lindsay White for special education, all trying to represent in the same room, and be able to answer questions and be able to build a program that looks at all those facets at the same time. So we've added that in there to support the culture and the education of our students. Again, collaboration among and between teams, so that might be just a classroom, or it might be an entire group that's able to get together and benefit from the conversations that are taking place. And then we're evaluating PD needs as expressed by staff. So we've asked for their feedback. There's a survey going out. Want to know what they need, what they think they need, and I've also requested their transcripts that they have from OPRO, so we can see, based on the new standards, what we need to put in place for them. Again, we have new educational standards. I'm currently working on a crosswalk. The state hasn't put it out yet to assist the teachers to implement the new standards and know what they were doing in the old, kind of like, to be able to compare the two and figure out where we need to strengthen what they're doing in a classroom, and what we need to do to support them. Some of the areas that we've already identified is that we need to, or strengthen areas in motor skills, and then strengthen language skills. And we're already addressing this by collaborating activities. We've got the first one coming up on the twenty-seventh, and then we have a PD day where we can kind of debrief on the twenty-ninth. So they're going to have an opportunity for all the therapists and the teachers, one or two at a time, to be in the room and work with a small group of students, and they'll go through the language skills, gross motor skills, spine motor skills, whatever type of activities we feel are going to support the students. And that's not just the identified students, it is all the students, so this will be going on periodically. So we're excited that that is coming back. It's something we had done years ago. And then again, we're going to make sure to get the needed professional development to support in areas that we have found are changes for us, that could be challenges for us. This year, we are evaluating and adjusting our curriculum. We're going to look at what we have, make sure that it meets the needs. Do we need to supplement? Do we need to look at replacing within the next couple of years? Schedules, we've kind of revamped those, and we're still monitoring those to make sure that we are able to meet the needs of the students in the times allotted. Materials, of course, and then the enrichment experiences. I'm meeting with preschool teachers tomorrow, and we're having a conversation about field trips. And at preschool, sometimes field trips are out of the building, and most of that field trips are kind of in the building. So we're having that conversation tomorrow. And then I wanted to recognize Lacy Robinson. She's here. Please stand up, please. I'm sorry. I was really excited. In the spring, Lacy sent an email. We had had a meeting on, you know, the building and culture and everything over the UCC, and immediately Lacy went back, and I don't even.
It's like the day of the meeting. We were still processing the meeting, and she was like all over.
And it was like, okay, I want to do this. I think it'd be great if we do this. Well, Lacy led this whole entire project. She said we needed to look like an early childhood center on the inside. If you have not been there, I ask you to please try to find a minute to go in and tour. I do have some pictures that I'm going to show you. Now, Lacy had a team help her, and I appreciate everyone that worked on it, but I knew Lacy was the person who painted it up, and I believe was the one of the most Lacy nights doing the painting, if I'm literate.
Hate it was unreal.
Yeah, oh, that's true. It's adorable. So I have just a few pictures. I could have put up twenty, but. All right, so we have one hallway that is an ocean hallway, says Dive into Learning, and there's just a couple of these examples.
You want to explain what each hallway, I mean, that they represent by being?
Yeah, so the first one, when you go in, preschool is down here, and so are some of the kindergarten classrooms. And so each classroom has a different animal. I guess you have ocean creatures animals here. I need to have a reason. All right, but you have a different type of animal by your doorway in that class that is known as, say, the octopus class, or the dolphin class. And I'll tell you what's been really helpful for the adults in the building. The first few weeks preschool, or Aunt Kinder. Honey, what's your teacher's name? And it's like, I don't know. She asked where I'm here. Okay, well, where, what hallway are you in? The jungle, or the farm hallway, or the ocean? And, oh, I'm in the jungle, and I'm in elephant class. Oh, that's great, so I can find that. And line bar for who she needs to be with, so. But they've done an excellent job. The pictures do not do justice to the paintings that they've done. We have Wild About Learning. It's a jungle hallway, so each one of those is an animal that you would find in a jungle-type environment. Kids love this, and it is so bright. In Mood for Learning is our farm hallway. You've got to remember, this is early childhood over there, so everything's just a little on the catchy side here. But it is just adorable. The office is in the Arctic, and so there are examples of that. That first one there, where it says children, that is actually the entryway, not the entryway, but when you come in, where you would meet with the secretary there to sign your student in and out, get any questions. Then we have Mr. Banks' office. We have our nurse's office there. It's adorable. And then again, dinosaurs, the library computer lab, so it is dinosaur themed for the students. And they are really excited, really engaged. The thing that I found most exciting was the staff was really excited and really engaged. So again, I want to thank Lacy for bringing this to us and getting this going, and thank you for your time. If you have questions, please ask. You can always email me. But again, I would love for you to give the opportunity to go over and just take a look at what's going on. The kids are having fun. Preschool's having fun. Kindergartners are having fun. Working with little kids sometimes can feel like a challenge.
But they also have to meet standards of compliance.
Yes, 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 yes.
Who would have thought that the state would require such things out of our youngsters? But I'm glad to see that you're making it fun.
We're doing the best that we can with that.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, thanks, Mr. Reynolds, thank you.
Well, I personally have not been able to get over to the building to see the paintings on the walls, but I will. Good stuff. Next, we have public participation, which I don't believe we have anything. Next, we have treasury items. Mrs. Bowers, would you like to start?
Yes, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the board minutes from the August twenty-eighth meeting.
Looking for a motion to approve the board minutes of August twenty-eighth. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, I have a second.
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft. Mrs. Bowers, do you call the roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the financial reports as presented.
Looking for a motion to approve the financial reports as presented. So moved. Mr. York, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt. Anything jump out? Mrs. Bowers, do you call the roll, please?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the Certificate of Revenues and Appropriations.
Looking for a motion to approve the Certificate of Revenues and Appropriations. So moved. Mrs. Ashcraft, I have a second. A second. Mr. Messerschmidt. Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
That motion carries five zero. Next, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the Bloom quote.
Looking for a motion to approve the Bloom quote. So moved. Mr. York, do I have a second? I'm sorry, Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. York? Like a technology piece?
Yeah, so this is like our Google services, email, our teachers use it for Google Classroom.
Mrs. Bowers, do you call the roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
That motion carries five zero. Next agenda item, I would like to ask for a motion to approve a donation of five hundred dollars for an activity fee for football. This is anonymous.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve a five-hundred-dollar activity fee donation. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. York, Mrs. Bowers, do you call the roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve a donation of five hundred dollars to the wrestling team from Tom Miller of Edward Jones.
Looking for a motion to approve a five-hundred-dollar donation from Tom Miller. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, I have a second. Mr. York? Mrs. Bowers, do you call the roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes. That goes into the athletic fund, right?
The wrestling team account.
Okay. Which is part of the athletic fund?
Yes. That motion carries five zero. Next, Mr. Jase, informational items. I was going to share with you about the Rockies' delinquency, and I've already done that. I also wanted to share with you, we got our first. Next, this is the informational items, and I was going to share with you about the Rockies delinquency, and I've already done that, I've also wanted to share with you, we got our first half casino monies. There's been a lot of talk about that, and everybody thought this was going to come through and just miraculously solve our problems, we got about thirty-three dollars per student in this first half, I anticipate we'll get the same thing probably in January or February.
They usually stop fifty dollars, so.
Yeah, so we'll get about sixty this year from casino revenues for our student, but I just wanted to throw that out there for you, I think that's all I have.
I have, just one more question about the Rockies, so do you know, like, and if you don't, that's fine, when that does come through, and we get that two point five million, is that like a lump sum or?
I don't think it will be a lump sum, and I think it's still going to be a while, and if you remember, I think it was like two years that Nexus actually filed before Rockies and that just got through. But I think the big thing here is that they settled with Nexus seventy percent, so the net of that was just thirty percent of those delinquencies, so. I anticipate something similar with the Rockies pipeline, I hope it doesn't work like that for us, but again, we don't want to anticipate.
But I mean seventy percent, still one point five million that we don't have, so we would get the seventy, we'd get the thirty, right?
The thirty, yes, yes, the Nexus pipeline, they rolled in their favor by seventy percent, so the other thirty.
We would get the thirty percent, we'd get the.
Yes, we would get thirty percent if they, if they settle Rockies the way that they settled Nexus, so.
It'd still be a million dollars, so.
Yeah, but we'll see.
Well, I mean, we got about thirty-three dollars per student, so, you know.
We're good.
We're good.
Yeah.
Everybody go to camp.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowers. Mrs. Spivey?
Yes, for the interest of telling, this might be a record, I'm going to recommend we block items A, B, A, board policy seven five four four, the use of social media platforms, basically they're encouraged for marketing of programs, but we have to make sure that we're compliant. And then the overnight trip over spring break with the softball group that, if you read closely, requires a chaperone per player.
We'll look for a motion to approve board policy seven five four four, use of social media and also an overnight field trip for the softball team. So move, Mr. Messerschmidt, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. York.
Did you look at?
Yes, it was confusing.
Does that sound?
Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, superintendent updates, basically about engagement, wanted to just share with you that we had our first community engagement meeting last week, I believe it was, time flies, we're having fun. We had about twenty-two people show up, and Bob Summers is running that process for us, and basically, we're putting out a series of six surveys to different constituents within our community. That dingo is going to be compiled prior to our next meeting, November second, and then our November second meeting with the community is basically to find big ideas, big rocks that we'll concentrate on, that we'll take back to the administrative team to problem solve. That should drive our work for school improvement, and also would hopefully align our budget to our goals as we identify what we need to address and how we're going to address for our next strategic plan. Then I also got to be with our student advisory with Dr. or Mr. Gagan and Mrs. Lyman, and I had, I smiled because it's one of my favorite things we do, I don't know, Doug, have you felt we didn't get a chance to debrief? But we had, I don't know, about eighteen students in the room.
Great company.
They were just so mature, we fed them pizza, and basically I just asked about, how's your school experience, what has been good, what's been not so good, what would you like to see us do better? What traditions would you want to see for your own grandchildren when you return, it was really cute, all the traditions were what you would expect, the pride, football games came up, and, oh, pep rallies, pep rallies, and how the teachers were engaged in the pep rallies, and I hope that never changes. But when it came to what we could do better, it was really interesting, and coming off of our report card results, it was like, this is really interesting to hear our students very maturely said, since COVID, we feel like, and this was their words, we see less engagement in our activities in the classroom, we'd like to see more involvement. They also mentioned that they really thrive over that di, they didn't use the word dialogue, that's my word, over that discussion and being able to talk about their learning, be able to link old information to new information, I mean, it came as if they wrote the research that we read about. Secondly, Mr. Gagan and I have been working on, what can we do to really enhance our career ed and think about pathways of learning? They pretty much run our plan, and they, and second, said, you know, we really need more exposure in the elementaries, we need to just be exposed as much as we can about jobs, what's out there, maybe start in third grade is what they were saying, and then when you're in middle school, maybe do some interest inventories and hone in on your skills, and maybe go out and do some job shadowing, and maybe a little bit more in depth of what your experimentation may be. So that by the time you get to high school, you're pretty much being exposed to, am I college, career, or military, and then how am I really navigating that path? So again, it was just a rich conversation, I can't wait for the next, but that engagement piece was appreciated, and then lastly, I have to tell you, I always say I've been around for a while, I've never seen a school honor safety officials on nine eleven, and I'm thinking, what a great idea, and how simple it is, but Jenny Halsey and her staff are commended for bringing in the safety officials on nine eleven, thanking them for their service, they also worked with students and shared a little bit about what they do. It really enhanced that partnership with school, community, and let the students see that they're our friends, they're not scary, and just to honor what they do on a daily basis for us, and how quickly we can forget until something tragic comes around, maybe in our neighborhood or our state or our nation, so kudos to, to the primary staff. So engagement is the highlight for this evening, and I'm impressed with what I've seen in buildings and the community, so, thank you.
So I had a conversation with Spade, was in your panel at the high school.
Did I get an A or a N?
She thought it was awesome.
Oh, good.
So definitely recommend sustaining that.
Good, good.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Spivey. Next up, we have. Items from board members, Mr. York, would you like to start?
I have nothing, this is one of those months where, but we're tech meeting, this after hours, we meet tomorrow night over there, so I'll have a full report to give you next, give us next month, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes, a couple of things, last Friday, prior to the football game, we did our first annual military tailgating party, and a lot of folks, a lot of support from EIS, saw Emily Tilt and Sarah Fryman out there, seemed like it was a really, really good event. And then obviously transitioned into Military Appreciation Night on Coomber Field, and I just, I thought it was awesome to see our boys run out on the field in their camouflage jerseys with the American flag and flags for all the different branches of services, a veteran myself, I really appreciate that, and I thought that was a, it was a class act, it was very well done, start to finish, I'm sure there was a lot more people involved in the, in the tailgating party. And then I also know there were a lot of donations here local, Todd's, IGA, and places like that, so just really wanted to give a shout out to them and everything that they were doing. And then just an administrative thing, I actually, Dustin Gadd, St. Clair Township trustee, reached out to me just prior to coming to this meeting and said that they're planning to do some call or workout here on Booz and Bark on Saturday, so probably need to let Mr. Clemmons know any events that are going on that's going to prevent traffic up and down Booz and Bark, it's supposed to be one day, six to eight hours working on that, that call for, and that's really all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Messerschmidt, Mr. Pressler? Thank you, Mr. Pressler, Mrs. Ashcraft?
I don't have, I don't have anything.
Next, Mrs. Ashcraft. I believe the reason we, we asked the order to come in was to kind of give us a little bit of relief of what exactly she planned on doing with property taxes, I don't know if this helped anybody, or, I mean, there's, I think there's still a lot in question, and I don't think that they, they know the answers, so. We wish it would have been more helpful, I would wish it would have been more helpful, but that's all I have, but at this time, I'm going to look for a motion to move to executive session for some, for all of the following reasons. To consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee, official, licensee, or student request a public hearing. So move, Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. York, Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, it is seven oh one.
We are back. Eight twenty-four. This time, we're going to look to personnel item. We're going to look for a motion to approve the personnel items and administrative items as amended, so move, Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second, Mr. York? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Looking for a motion to adjourn, so move, Mr. Messerschmidt?
Second.
Mr. York, Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, it is twenty-five PM.